And is. All right, well, you want us to wait? You want to wait? Maybe. Let's wait a couple of minutes. I'm just going to wait a couple of minutes, just for. Yeah. Since we waited this long, another couple of minutes is not going to really matter.
Just waiting a second for our final.
Late last week, no students debate or work at any of the courts should be reported.
Okay, folks, go ahead and call this meeting to order if we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, Kate.
What's with the pastor here? Mary Clinton's.
Here.
To Penestra.
Here.
Count to resolve. Count to Russell.
Here.
Count to Beach.
Here.
There you have a quorum.
Thank you. So next is our audience of citizens. If anyone wants to speak on this issue, now would be the time. Anyone online? All right, we don't see any hands online. We see no hands here, so go ahead and close the audience of citizens and we'll move on to our meeting agenda. Agenda item, go ahead.
The violation of the ethics policy and code of ethics. Leave it at that.
So what we'd like to do is start with, I'm going to have Attorney DiNaprio just kind of run down, because it's been a while for everyone. Some folks probably have not heard the whole timeline. And so just kind of run down a summary from beginning to.
From the beginning.
From the beginning.
Yes. Well, as you know, the.
Briefly.
As you know, from our discussion, probably about six months ago, the town of Berlin, under its charter, established a code of ethics. And likewise, under the charter and pursuant to the ethics policy that applies to various categories of people, there's a board of ethics. And the code of ethics and the board of ethics were established pursuant to the Connecticut general statutes. And consistent with state statute, Berlin's ethics policy provides that unless there's a finding of probable cause by the board of ethics when a complaint is filed, a complaint alleging a violation of the ethics policy or code of ethics is confidential unless the respondent requests that it be made public. So the focus of this proceeding has to do with the finding by the board of ethics in December of 2021 in response to a complaint by Donna Veach against Joanne Angelico Stetson of a violation of the confidentiality provisions of the ethics policy. Specifically, if you look at section one dash five of the ethics policy, it has a provision that indicates that unless the board makes a finding of a violation, a complaint alleging a violation shall be confidential, except upon the request of the respondent. So as is consistent, as I indicated a moment ago with state statute, the ethics policy has this confidentiality provision. When the board makes a finding of no violation, the complaint, the record of the investigation, the existence of the complaint remains confidential forever. When the board makes a finding of probable cause, then you have a public hearing that follows that finding of probable cause. And in the event that there's a finding of a violation, then the file loses its confidentiality status. The complaint, the investigation, everything at that point becomes becomes public. So the background on this is that, as I indicated, and as you recall, back in December of 2021, after a couple nights of hearings, the Board of Ethics unanimously found that in response to a complaint by Donna Veach that Ms. Angelico Stetson had violated the confidentiality provision of the ethics policy. The backdrop of this is that a complaint had been filed against Donna Veach by one of Ms. Angelico Stetson's campaign workers when she ran for state representative in a campaign against Mrs. Veach. Around the same time that the board had dismissed the complaint against Mrs. Veach for lack of probable cause, so under the ethics policy, it was supposed to be confidential. Ms. Angelico Stetson approved and caused to be transmitted to Berlin voters, a campaign mailer. And in that campaign mailer, there was a statement that Donna Veach was being investigated by the Board of Ethics. You all have been provided earlier this year with a complete copy of the record of the Board of Ethics proceeding. The record consists of multiple exhibits, including a copy of the mailer, a copy of the Facebook transmission or Facebook post, if you will, that's very similar to that campaign mailer, and copies of the transcripts. The proceedings were recorded and transcribed by a court reporter. And you have all that information, and hopefully over the last nine months, you've had a chance to read it. So Mrs. Veach filed a complaint with the Board of Ethics alleging violations of sections one dash five A and one dash five C of the ethics policy due to the disclosure of confidential matters to the public. The Board of Ethics filed probable cause, conducted evidentiary hearings in November and December of 2021. And as I've stated, and as you'll recall, in late December of 21, found a violation. Now, the reason why we're here in September 2023 in response to a violation that was found in December of 2021 is in part due to the fact that Ms. Angelico Stetson, as was her right, timely appealed the Board of Ethics decision to the Connecticut Superior Court. That appeal was voluntarily withdrawn by Ms. Angelico Stetson in December of 2022. In the early days of the appeal, the Ms. Angelico Stetson's counsel asked the court to stay the town council's proceedings on the penalty phase of this process because of the possibility that the Superior Court could sustain the appeal and reverse the Board of Ethics decision. So the thinking was if the town council were to impose a penalty and the Superior Court were subsequently to sustain the appeal, reverse the Board of Ethics decision, that Ms. Angelico Stetson would be harmed because of the imposition of the penalty. The court denied the motion for stay. We voluntarily, we talked with the council about agreeing to stay this proceeding out of fairness to Ms. Angelico Stetson. So that's why there was, at least for the first year or so, a delay. And then we had requests that you receive the record. And then we had some scheduling issues over the summer, spring and summer that led us to last month. And then the desire to have the whole council present brought us to this month. So under the town charter, again, code of ethics exists in two places in Berlin. One is under the town charter and one is under the ethics policy. Under section nine dash five of the town charter, when the Board of Ethics finds a violation of the code of ethics, the town manager with council approval shall take such appropriate action as deemed necessary, including suspension, censure, or dismissal from employment as may be applicable. And then under the ethics policy, section one dash six, there's a similar penalty provision that says violation of any provision of the policy or the town charter shall constitute grounds for removal or dismissal from office or position and may be punished by public censure and reprimand, a civil penalty of not more than $1,000 per violation, and restitution of any pecuniary benefits received because of the violations committed. So the Board of Ethics has exclusive jurisdiction under the charter and under the ethics policy and consistent with the Connecticut general statutes to determine whether or not a violation has occurred. They completed their task. The appeal was withdrawn, so that violation is a matter of record. The town council is not reconsidering or retrying or in any way determining whether or not the Board of Ethics was wrong or whether you disagree with the Board of Ethics or whether or not they should have found there to be a violation. The violation was found, the appeal was withdrawn. Your sole role in this process, under your charter and ethics policy, is to determine what, if any, penalty should be imposed in accordance with those charter and ethics policy provisions that I just made reference to. So you've been provided with the complete record. You've had the opportunity to review it. That's a quick summary of what you have in front of you. And again, your charge is limited to determining what, if any, penalty should be imposed in response to the Board of Ethics finding of this specific violation of breach of the confidentiality provision of the policy. Okay?
Thank you, thank you, Jeff. Okay, so also the respondents and the complainants attorney are here. I assume each of you would like to make a statement if you wish, now would be the time. And please come up to the podium, if you would, just identify yourself for the for the record.
Good evening, David Hill, the attorney for Joanne Stetson. Want to open just by thanking the Baron Council for the courtesy of continuing this from last week to tonight so that we could have a full council, everyone could give their attention to this matter. Previously addressed the council, hey back, probably in February, is my guess.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Great.
The only point I sort of want to, or points I want to reiterate are, as Attorney DiNaprio said, this proceeding is not to retry the Board of Ethics proceedings. Board of Ethics made its finding, Joanne is bound by it. And we acknowledge that. I do think it's important to note what the Board of Ethics found, though. And in particular, on page 117 of the the transcript, Chairman Hines said, "Board finds this to be an unintentional violation." And by the same token that that ethics proceeding is to be retried, I think that finding conclusion is not to be retried. I don't think the council can punish Joanne for, because they think it was something worse than an unintentional violation. So I think those findings by the Board of Ethics are binding on the council. And in fact, I think on page 114 of the transcript, Chairman Hines also indicates that I think he said something to the effect of, "I acknowledge that Attorney Fishbine, during his closing argument conceded that he had was not able to prove a nefarious motive in this particular case." So I understand from Attorney Fishbine's prior presentation before this council, I fully understand his desire to advocate selflessly for his client. All of that is done, that's been decided. What's left is what is the appropriate punishment for an unintentional violation? We've previously argued to the council that we think a reprimand is appropriate in Joanne's service and the fact that it was unintentional. We concede that a penalty up to $1,000 can be imposed by the council. There was an argument made last time about restitution. There's no finding in the record of something that would justify a restitution order in this case. There's no improper gift, a bribe, types of things that would be restitution. And I looked at cases before I came here this evening. I could find no case where there was a violation of this sort where anyone had a restitution order imposed on. So I don't think that would be appropriate. I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. One. Away.
I represent Donna Veach, just want to address some of the comments by attorney. Oh, I'm Craig Fishbine, I represent Donna Veach. You know, the standard before the Board of Ethics is not whether there was a potential violation, unintentional violation. I mean, naturally, if somebody just did something offhand, one could discount it. There is no gray here. A finding was found. I'll go through the evidence and it is quite clear from the record. Ms. Angelico Stetson admitted, he did what she did to try to win an election. It's an intentional act. Can't frame it any other way. Nefarious motive, not our burden to prove a nefarious motive. Fact of the matter is that individual just used the process, tried to win election. So with that, I'm just going to go to my prepared remarks. As Attorney DiNaprio indicated, August 24th of 2021, ethics complaint was filed in this case. September 16th of 2021, probable cause finding, and then the hearing is supposed to have. Hearing was supposed to be September 29th. It was delayed, it was delayed, it was delayed. Got delayed unfortunately until after the election. The election that year was November 2nd. Claimed then by Ms. Angelica Stetson was, "Well, you can't do anything to me. I'm no longer an elected official." She didn't run that. You both swear in your elected official, I think two weeks after their election or something, very quickly. Can't catch me. From there, we did have the hearing. And what the evidence showed was that in 2020, and Ms. Angelica Stetson ran against Donna Veach for the 30th General Assembly District. At the time, they were both town councillors, as most of you know. On September 15th was a meeting in these chambers. During that meeting, Ms. Angelica Stetson raised some raised some issues of possible conflict by Ms. Veach. Two days later, this young man, who was a campaign worker of Ms. Angelica Stetson, who said that, never viewed the meeting, said that he didn't know anything about the ethics code, drafts, an ethics complaint. It's dated September 17th, but it doesn't get filed September 21st. Why is that? Because Ms. Angelica Stetson, Lisa Campanelli, reviewed it before it got filed. That was the evidence for the board. I already know about confidentiality. We know that the board dismissed the complaint on October 16th. We also know that 10 days later, mailer went out to an excess of 3,000 people in the 30th General Assembly District. In February, we were here. You may recall Ms. Angelica Stetson addressed you. And you know, the one thing I didn't hear that night, three very simple words. "I am sorry." Still haven't heard it tonight. "I am sorry." Members of the public seek at least two things when they're elected officials. Truthfulness, humility. Were the actions truthful? I think the Ethics Board found that they weren't. Are the post-finding actions humble? Really not. We have to ask, does the ethics code exist in Berlin? I mean, if something doesn't happen to prevent this from happening in the future, you, one of you could be the next victim, quite frankly. 1.6 of the ethics code, part that is glossed over here tonight, says the penalty of not more than $1,000 per violation. And the problem here is that if one mailer was sent out, it's a violation. But in excess of 3,000 mailers was sent out. It's clear that the drafter said, "Each time you do it, you could be fined $1,000." Let's do the math. 3,000 times 1,000? $3 million. Now, that's what your code says. That's what's before you here tonight. And I'll admit, it's a ridiculous number, right? So I will add another characteristic of elected officials that I think all of our elected officials should have, and that's benevolence. So I stand here tonight on behalf of my client, asking you for a level of benevolence after all this. Amazing. You know, $3 million is in the mix. I think $10,000 is reasonable to stop this from happening in the future. This should not have happened, was solely within Ms. Angelica Stetson's hand, and it happened. To utilize this young man, be involved in this is a different aspect of this that I need not touch. But at the end of the day, do not do anything, as I said before. One of you could be the next. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we've heard from attorneys for both sides. So now we'd come to our council discussion on this issue. Obviously, it's in our hands now as far as the penalty phase based upon the charter, which gives us a few different options. So what do we, what do we want to discuss? What are we thinking? Any thoughts to open our discussion?
I, I would like to ask corporate counsel if his interpretation of violation is the same as far as per incident, meaning that.
Well, the question that comes up, you know, when you when you read language like that, where it says per violation, is what was the violation? Was the violation simply the breach of confidentiality by virtue of approving a statement by Ms. Angelica Stetson's campaign? Or was it each time that that statement was made? So it's not like there's a case interpreting the Berlin ethics policy saying what the answer is. So you know, you can, you can have your own interpretation of it. But that's the question is what, what constitutes the violation? You know, there wasn't, there wasn't a decision by the Board of Ethics that there were 3,000 violations. I don't specifically recall whether there was evidence put in the record as to what the precise number of mailers were. But obviously, there's also the Facebook part of it. So if the interpretation was that each time a statement is made, it's a separate violation, then you'd also have to know, and we don't have this in the record either. I think there was some talk about how much activity, how long the Facebook post was up. But we don't have, I don't think I remember anything in the record about the number of times it was shared. I don't know. You know, I don't, I don't recall, as we sit here almost two years later, what the record has in it by way of details about the number of mailers and the number of Facebook impressions. I do recall that there was some attempt by the complainant to put some records from Facebook into, into evidence. And there was a lot of debate about whether they were properly authenticated when they were hearsay and whatnot. But you know, that's, that's the question is, was the violation? You can read the Board of Ethics opinion for yourself. It's, it's that one-page decision that they issued. So you know, there was no finding that there were 3,000 violations, so.
Good question, good answer. What else do we want to talk about? What are we thinking? Thoughts?
I think it's one violation. I think that there's no way beyond probably, like, you can figure out how many impressions via Facebook there was. I think we have to approach this one violation, in my opinion.
Anyone else? Thoughts on consequences for the violation?
It's a very serious matter that people pick an election so lightly. And unfortunately, our citizens have paid the price for it. Obviously, we're not going to fine someone $3 million. That's not going to happen. But the one thing that upsets me most about this whole thing is there was no apology, no attempt to rectify the harm to the good name of Mrs. Veach. If I had heard, "I'm sorry," at some point, through this whole couple of years, I'd say, "Okay, it was a mistake, we'll move on." But there's been no admission of any mistake by by this person. And it's a shame that our election is tainted like this. It cost our taxpayers, I'm told, around $7,000 for all the transcripts or anything that had to be done. I don't think we're going to recover that money tonight, and that's not the point. But the point is to show there is some consequence for your actions. And when we're running for office or after we're elected, we need to be very cautious on what we say about our opponents and how we treat people. Because that's the standard. Recently, someone was all upset, signs were knocked down. That's terrible. That's stopping someone's freedom of speech. And this goes along the same way. If you're going to tell lies like this or bend the truth, I don't know if this young man was steered to make this complaint if this young man was steered to make this complaint or not, like, like I heard tonight, and I'm not here to decide yet. But I think it just, it's not a problem. To me, it's a big problem. And I'd like to see at least a public apology. And perhaps some token donation to a charity or something, some, some consequence. You know, not life offering, not shattering, but, you know, something to show a sincere regret for what happened.
Donna, on, online? Oh, mute.
You're muted, Donna.
You're muted, Donna.
Apropos of being muted, I was just apologizing for having, us having to reschedule and technical difficulties. You know, I, I think as, as Joanne's attorney reminded us, I read the full transcript, and on page 117, the Ethics Committee does indeed say, and I'm looking at it right now, that there was no intentionality. And I, I agree with Casey also that it should be one violation. While I think it's a, a very creative interpretation on the part of the other lawyer, you know, to say there were potentially 3,000 violations, you know, I think that's a, that's a creative interpretation. I think that's outrageous to think we're going to go in that direction at all. So I think it's one violation, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. And I would say that, you know, I, I feel like an, an apology, I think, would be appropriate, yes. But other than that, in light of Joanne's service to the community, now, that is something that I would feel comfortable with. I don't think I would see a reason for anything more than that.
All right, thank you, Donna. Peter?
First, I want to thank Mark for extending this to tonight. We were ready to go last Tuesday. This caucus was ready to go. Everyone was ready to go, and he held it till tonight, which was the right thing to do. So I thank you for that, Mark. I guess, I guess we're here to chastise a volunteer for making a mistake. You know, Joanne's been a member of the Board of Ed, Economic Development, and this very council. So we're being asked to add insult to injury. She has lived with this for two years. The last thing she thinks of at night and the first thing she thinks of in the morning. I think time served. It's plenty of We will, we pass this, whatever we're going to pass. I think we run the very possibility of weaponizing the Ethics Board. We're telling future and current office holders and all members of all boards and commissions, all volunteers, as Mark rightly puts, when we can, that participation will expose them to sanctions due to a simple mistake. If you think we have a problem filling vacancies on boards and commissions, I can assure you, this resolution, or whatever it is, will dry up the pool of candidates. I will have to reassess my participation on this council, as I am very human and make mistakes. You know, there should be mercy here. Where's the mercy? The quality of mercy isn't strained. It was separated. It falls as a rain from above on all of us. And it's twice blessed. Blesses those who give mercy as well as those who receive mercy. So let's all be blessed tonight. And show our colleague, Joanne, our mercy. So we can continue to do the people's business. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've heard from everyone here that will be voting tonight. I mean, yes, 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 absolutely.
Yeah, just a little. I promise it won't be long. I look at this from the standpoint as the Ethics Committee, as they said, made their decision, and now it's time for us to decide what the penalty per se would be. You know, ever since I was a little kid, I always knew that your actions always have consequences. You do something great, you get rewarded. You do something bad, you get punished. And I think, you know, that's something that's should always be followed. Any, you know, actions have consequences. Some actions have bigger consequences than others. You know, you, you run a campaign, you run for office, you're responsible for the campaign, you're responsible for, for what's done and what goes out. You know, and I can sympathize with both parties in this case where this has been going on for three years, and they're both living with it for every day and, and want to have it completed and, and done. But again, I think, you know, we do have to, to look at what's needed. I know you were talking about, you know, showing some mercy. You know, I think it would have been, I, I think it's easier to show some mercy when someone shows some sign of regret, apologize or something like that. You know, so, I mean, look, I, I agree, you know, we're not going to be paying, you know, thousands, thousands of dollars. I, I, I agree with that. However, you know, a bunch of mailers went out, stuff was posted on Facebook, so a lot of people saw it. You know, so I'm thinking some type of like you, like was mentioned, a public apology that needs to go out where it's going to maybe hit the same kind of volume of people, whether it's something in, you know, in the Citizen, something on a Facebook, something there that says, you know what, I was found guilty, intentional or non-intentional, I'm sorry. But I think something, you know, again, I think some kind of consequence should be out there.
Anyone else? Any follow-up? No. So, I mean, we've heard, you know, I guess both sides of the argument and, you know, whatever consequences there we are allowed to, to do under the Charter. Don't have a lot of latitude with most things. I think, you know, unintentional or intentional, however, however it is interpreted is you know, up to, up to us to, I guess, listen to that. If you look at some of the facts, I mean, it was a two, two-night hearing. There's a lot of, lot of information in those transcripts. Some of it's could be construed as unintentional. Some of it could certainly be construed as intentional, no doubt about it. Somebody took, obviously, when the whole thing started, there was an affirmative step that was taken to file the complaint. And as it continued, the violation occurred, obviously, where it was released in public, and we certainly then had a had a campaign that, you know, we have we tried to discredit the opponent, Donna Beach, unfortunately. Certainly not, not right for her. I don't think she's gone through a night since it happened where she hasn't thought about it either. So, I mean, it's certainly both sides of the, of the coin here, no doubt about it. And it's difficult, you know, mercy, yeah. I mean, obviously, there's no $3 million fine here. I'm not sure that's the right interpretation. Maybe it's right, maybe it's wrong, but there's, you know, I mean, I guess the Code of Ethics, there's many different violations that could occur for town employees and/or elected officials, and you know, there has to be some type of range of penalties, which it's difficult to ascertain in, in my almost eight years. I don't know, folks, some of you folks have been here longer than me. I haven't, we haven't faced this either, so it's, right, it's it's, it's new territory for us on the council. Peter, you've been here a long time, so, you know, there's nothing, nothing to go by, certainly no case law, nothing, as Mr. Dinafro mentioned, to, to lead us in whatever direction it might be, but, you know, I, I do think that, you know, it did cross the town around $7,000, and that's just the extra. That's not the other town staff money that was spent. That is part of it, but I think the the worst thing about it is the misrepresentation to the voters. I mean, that's really, you know, that's really the crux of the issue in my mind, that we misrepresented something to the voters about a an opposing candidate and that, you know, may linger out there for a long time, forever, if it was on a mailer. And it does seem to be somewhat, if you look at the facts and the in the transcript, you know, there was some intentional behavior somewhere along the line, or it wouldn't have got filed, and it wouldn't have gone the way it went. That's just my interpretation, but. Yeah.
Guys, bring it up.
Sure can.
The attorney explained that the board thought it was an unintentional act. But, but when I read the transcript, someone required, why did you do this? And Stetson replied, I did it to win. And since then, there's been no remorse and no apology, which to me means it was an intentional act. And I don't want to send the message to other people that it's okay to do this just to win. We have to hold ourselves to a better standard. Somehow, there has to be a consequence, so this is not an acceptable plan going forward.
No, I mean, no doubt. No doubt. So here we are. So I don't, I don't know either what the best punishment is. It's not something we, we do or relish doing at all. It's not what we're here for. We're here to conduct the town business and make the town run and, you know, watch our budgets, fund all our town departments. So it's not a fun time for anybody to be here and make these decisions, but we do need to make it right or as right as it can be. So, I mean, I, I don't know. I'm thinking certainly a reprimand is, is allowed under the the Charter. I would also request a public apology. We could flesh that out a little bit more if you want, and I don't, I don't know about the monetary. I don't think, I'm not sure about that. Could be a very minor one, just to send a message, or could be none at all. I, I, I don't, I don't know what I think about that part of it. But I would certainly want the motion, as we, if we take a motion here shortly on a a, you know, a public reprimand from the council, which is forever in the, in the record, and an apology. It, it has to go back out to the voters, to the people of Berlin somehow. And I would request that it go, you know, in the Citizen, which is the paper, I guess, most folks use, maybe on, it could be in whatever format. I don't think we dictate the format, but I think it needs to go out there and needs to go out there on social media too, where, where, where the violation went out to. Financially, I don't know. What, what, what do we think about that side of it? That's the one I'm not sure of, one way or the other, but do we have thoughts on that? I mean, if it's a minor penalty of, I don't, I don't know what that would be. Minor, I'm not, not looking at her or anyone financially, of course, that's not the, the goal here. I think the censure cover up it.
And what about the published apology? Because I think Donna deserves an apology. She was wrong. And I'm not looking for a pound of flesh. I'm just looking to make peace. And I almost wish this was someone on my side of the aisle, so it wouldn't look vindictive. It's not about that. It's about keeping our process legitimate.
Well, if you recall the night Joanne addressed the council, she said it wasn't intentional.
But I never heard any apology. I heard about lasagna and all the great things she does, and she's done a lot of great things. But I never heard a lousy I'm sorry.
Well, if, if you want a motion, I'll move for censure.
Okay.
Are we going to do each of them separately?
I would second.
I would, I would put it all together, but that's the motion on the floor. We can take the vote on that. We have a second on it? You have a second?
Just, just as a, just as a point of order. There's no censure. She the respondent is not a sitting elected or appointed town official. You can't censure her, so it'd be a reprimand.
Reprimand, okay.
Can, your attorney, can, can we require a public apology?
Without that, it can't be a censure.
You can, you can, under the code, if that's what you think is reasonable punishment, you can put that in your finding, but I don't have any way to enforce it. So if the respondent decides that she's not going to make the apology, then I can't do anything about it.
Or, or is it the same with I think that flows to the fine too, right? What happens if we ask for a small monetary?
Well, if you, if you impose a financial penalty and it's not paid, then
What happens then?
It's up to you. Want to go to small claims court?
Yeah. The toothless charter with, with whatever. This, not, not that we're looking for that, but it just, you know, it doesn't make our ethical policy look too, too strong if there is a violation.
A lot of towns don't even have an ethics policy.
Right, right. That is scary. That's a scary thing.
This ethics policy came into existence in 2016, folks.
Yeah, right. It's recent, right, right, yeah. So that motion's withdrawn, right? What's the, is there another one? I mean, I would, obviously, we'd need to call it a reprimand. That's one of the things we do. I think somewhere in there, public apology has to be requested, understood that we have no authority to impose that on anyone. But I, I, I think it needs to be said, and, and I think it's something that would be fair.
Think if you combine the two?
Yeah, I mean, if that could be, we can make that one, one motion or one. I don't think.
I'm not going to make that motion.
No? Okay. I mean, I mean, we could do it.
To you.
Yeah.
Okay. And I would make
Hold on a second. There was a motion, and that was withdrawn?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no motion?
For censure. There's no motion now.
Okay.
So is the motion now for reprimand and public apology?
We probably gonna, well, well, yeah, I mean, whoever wants to make the motion, who's officially making it?
I'll, I'll make that.
Okay.
Then, a little second?
All right.
What was the motion? For reprimand and a public apology? My second.
So for discussion now? What are we thinking about that?
We need to frame how the apology will be made. Is that in our purview?
I mean, can we say it's a public, you know, needs to be a public apology, but do we? I guess the question would be, do we then dictate in the Citizen and on social media, or how would that work?
You can say whatever you want. I'm just telling you that with respect to that particular a reprimand, a public reprimand is a letter that's going to come from the town to the respondent. That's going to be a public document. You can control that. Okay? In terms of saying to somebody, you must affirmatively act, I don't have any way to enforce that. So you, it doesn't mean you can't find under the Charter that that is an appropriate part of the penalty. I'm just telling you that if the respondent says, I'm not apologizing, it, it's not like I can file a lawsuit to force her to apologize. So in terms of the wording of it, now, it's such appropriate action as deemed necessary. So if you deem a public apology necessary, then make that part of the penalty. And if the respondent complies, fine. If she doesn't comply, then I guess we'll have a further discussion about it. About whether you want to send follow-up correspondence or publish the fact that the apology wasn't made despite the lack of a monetary penalty. There's other things we can do, talk about it, but.
So we would perhaps modify that motion a little bit, perhaps? We did say we requested apology, public, I forgot how, what, what's the wording on? Reprimand? And frame it more, public apology means what? Means in media, both written and
Published, public apology in social media and local newspaper?
Yes. Would, would you agree to that? Would would you agree to that change? So.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll second.
Do we withdraw the whole thing and put it all together? No. All right, can't do that? Okay. We'll do it that way. All right. Do we put a timeframe on it? Obviously, as you discussed, we would come back if I mean, I don't know what the rest of it would be, but not that we would do that.
Well, you're going to issue the reprimand presumably immediately.
Yes.
So if you want to request the public apology be made within thirty days or whatever timeframe you deem reasonable, you can again, there's no reference to this.
Let's make that part of the amendment to the motion. It would be in social media and published in a local paper within thirty days.
Second, yes.
Okay, so we have, well, the amendment to the motion on the floor. Go ahead and take a vote on that. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, so that the amendment carries. And then the motion on the, or the motion for the public reprimand.
Just for clarification, would the clerk please read the whole? That's why I wanted to. Yeah, thank you.
That's the motion. Yes. So take a vote on that. All of us in favor of that motion? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Yeah, did we, did we hear from Donna?
You know, I can't hear the motion. I couldn't hear the motions. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry, Kate.
That's okay. It's not your fault. So the motion would be to issue a reprimand and ask for a public apology to be stated in both the media and the public newspaper, in a public newspaper, within thirty days of
I would vote for the reprimand, but not the public apology, because
It's one motion now. So.
I would be a nay also.
A nay, okay, so. Okay, so that's, so
I would like to do this like
Okay, yes, yeah, I was going to ask you that, so there's no
All right, so this is going to be a voice vote, please?
Yes or no?
Councilor Capola?
Yes.
Councilor Foster?
Yes.
Councilor Pianetta?
Yes.
Councilor Ismael?
No, nay.
Councilor Russell?
No.
Mayor
Yes.
Guys have it. You have four yeses and two no's.
All right, so the motion motion carries. And we'll see what happens. And you know, I just want to say, folks, thank you for, you know, being here and, you know, I'm sorry we had a stumble through this, but as you, we have said, it's never, it's a relatively new policy. We have not had anything before us like this before, so it's you know, it's difficult to go through this, and it's difficult to make these decisions, but you know, I'm pretty confident it it was the fair thing to do, certainly, and hence the motion will carry, and we'll go ahead and finish that up with the with the letter and look for the apology. So thank you, thank you all very much. Nothing else on our agenda, correct? So we're all set, so motion to adjourn? The move, all right, second? All in favor? All right. Thank you.